Excited about our, this committee. The goals of this committee is to improve educational outcomes for our students. We want to be able to think a little bit outside of the box. And all of this will be funded through our board, through board efforts and additional grants that we apply for. One recommendation moving forward, I would recommend that we include the excellence program as part of this. It would eliminate one committee meeting and we could still have a voice for our excellence program as well. But we can discuss that more in November's board meeting coming. Just kind of catch everybody up. The current activities that we already have, and I will try to make this as painless as possible. And then we can get down to new business. The current activities that we currently have in place to improve student outcomes. We conduct third grade tutoring at North Coffee, New Union and Hickerson. One thing I like about this is flexible. Hickerson has started today and they started with a third grade group of five and a fourth grade group of five. I'll explain a little bit more about that here in a second. Those third and fourth graders are tutored for an hour a day, four days a week. And 100 days throughout the school year, 180 school, school day calendar. They are going to be tutored 100 days. It is a targeted group. These students are by invite only, which are chosen by our teachers and staff. And what our goal is ultimately is move approaching kids from approaching to proficient. So it will be tied with TCAP. The goal is to have 10 students in each, a minimum of 10 students in each group. There's one EA and one teacher per classroom. So tying that back in with Hickerson, the teacher may be working with a third grade group for half an hour. The EA is working with a fourth grade group and then they switch. So we're able to accomplish two grade levels in one, one group, but with two subgroups. We share the same curriculum that we use during the school day, which I find very powerful. Our goal is to start more groups with our littles in January. And the reason we wait until January is it gives our teachers enough time to identify students that have gaps. For our kindergarteners, that's their first five months of school. And sometimes you, we have a hard time discerning who has gaps and who doesn't. So we'll hopefully have some groups tied in to our littles, our kindergarten first and second, starting in January. Our littles only go two days a week. We have one school that proposed this and I'm all for it. They're doing it in the morning prior to school beginning. One, that's the prime learning time and two, that's when, when we have them available at school. So instead of that, those groups doing two days a week where they're littles, we would go four days. It's the same amount of time, it's two hours, but we would do it parts of, of four mornings. Our littles possibly, and I'm going to ask Ms. Jonah for her opinion here. We could possibly tie, tie their success to our Ames Web screener. If y'all, you and the rest of-
I think that's probably appropriate. I know that we have some survey level assessments that we would use, but those tie alongside Ames Web. So I think that would probably be an appropriate screener to use to see their movement.
Their growth. Awesome. Thank you. We pay our teachers $30 an hour and educational assistant makes $20 an hour plus benefits at 16%. Ms. Jonah, can you do that mental math?
Yeah, I think it's about $5800.
Oh, okay. So that's, that's pretty good. So-
Is that for the 100 days for each one of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Pretty good investment. We're improving children's trajectory and one of our tutors calls it her-
Happy hour.
Happy hour. And she really looks forward to that hour each day. We've kicked around the idea of a performance bonus. If our students, if we move X amount of students, that's for our committee to decide. If we move seven out of 10, eight out of 10 of those students from approaching to proficient, add, give an extra supplement. But those are just some things we can all, we can kick around as we move through this. There's another pot of money and we use our TESA outcome bonus. These are some of the activities that are going on in our secondary schools. We have ACT mastery prep. That's an online prep program and the professional development that accompanies it. We have after school tutoring for ninth through 12th grades in math all year. And ACT focused tutoring that goes on the second semester prior to the ACT being given. ACT certified trainer for five teachers and one counselor. Summer planning for ELA and, and math, that's ninth through 12th grade. So we stay pretty busy in the summers. NIET and Ms. Jonah, I'm about to run out of gas here. I'm going to let you take some of the weight here for a second while I catch my breath. Can you, because we do NIET through a grant, what kind of things does that pertain to?
Okay. The grant that we have is for three of our schools, Northeast and New Union. And this is the third year of that grant. And so that has really been, we have a consultant, Courtney, that's from NIET. And it's been leader support in doing classroom visits. And so we have a tool from TDOE that we use to visit classrooms. And so that's been very powerful in those elementary schools. And we've rolled that out to the other three elementary schools. And they've been able to be part of that work with Courtney, not as directly, but indirectly, anytime that we can get them to be part of that. So secondary, we're seeing some success from that. And so secondary wanted to kind of jump on that bandwagon as well. And so Krista has started, they start actually Friday, working with NIET. They have a different consultant, and I can't think of Scott Duncan is his name. And they are doing nine days, it says 10 days here, but I think they went down to nine days, of PD for ELA teachers at the middle school and the high school. And so that will be kind of the same thing they'll be doing, training with leaders and classroom visits.
Okay.
How much longer does that grant have to go?
This is the last year of the grant.
Three year grant.
Yep. And so, yeah, that's about to run out with us unfortunately.
And we can reapply or?
Nope. This is, this is just, it's a federal grant too. And so that's another thing with the federal things like they are.
Federal monies.
So, so yes, so that one will sunset at the end of this school year. And then, I mean, I'm sure there'll be different opportunities that come up. And I always apply for the different grants when they come available, but that one will be ending. And so if we wanted to extend specifically with NIET, that would have to come probably out of the outcome bonus money like what Krista's doing with secondary.
But we do have, we do have some flexibility with that TESA outcome bonus. The challenge is we don't know how much we're getting in a timely manner. So we're really, would be operating off a year prior, the known bonus, so.
My understanding is that TESA outcomes funding is really got to be tied to the program. At the first year, it was just kind of like, here it is.
Right.
And we could spend it on anything, but now it's more specific that we got to-
It's supposed to be tied to our goals.
Right.
And so like our goals, third grade ELA, which is a big goal for us. And then I think eighth grade ELA and math. And I know there's a ready grad goal. So, yeah, so that work with NIET really does tie in directly to those goals for student outcomes.
But they do and they, it would go hand in hand, the TESA. And what we're doing, I mean, all of these, as you can see, are, are trying to improve student performance. Talk to us about Mastery Connect at the middle school.
And I'll talk a little bit about that. I'm, I'm not really a middle school person, but Mastery Connect is an online testing platform pretty much that they can use to give standards based assessments to students. And so they're using that throughout the year. They've seen a lot of success with that, with getting students prepared for TCAP. That's what Dr. Anderson really says has been powerful to move students.
It's got formative and summative assessments as part of that.
And then letters training across the district. We've trained all elementary ELA teachers in letters over the last five years that I've been here. I think that started my first year here. And so we still have new teachers that come in. And so we are just trying to continually catch up anybody who's new to our district. Make sure they have that very important letters training, which is about the phonemic awareness and phonics and teaching kids to read, which is the foundation of everything we do in elementary. And so we still, we'll, we'll continue to have holes, but Robin Watkins, one of our ELA coaches, she leads that training for us. And so we're using money from TESA for that. Wonders PD, that's kind of went in with NIET, Wonders is our reading curriculum. And so we, whenever, I have grant money to pay for substitutes for the schools who are part of the grant, but the district is using TESA outcome bonus money to pay for the other schools' teachers to be able to come to those sessions as well for their substitutes. And so we're kind of briding some funds there to make sure that all teachers in the district can benefit from those prep days across the district. And the next one is you, Mr. Hargrove, Egenuity.
So you're not going to comment on that?
I mean, I mean, I-
I appreciate you sharing. Egenuity is a computer program that we use at, at the call center. It's an online curriculum for our high school, middle school and high school students. We also are looking at bringing it as our credit recovery program for our high school. So that, that will be partially new because we, we've used a different platform for credit recovery. Also, we've added a live virtual Algebra I teacher at, at the Virtual Academy. She'll, she'll teach two hours a week there. Just allows us to provide a little more face to face intimate type instruction.
Can they ask questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Type format?
Yes, ma'am. Very much so. All right. I know that was a lot, but I did want you to know that we, we, we do have some things in place from our elementary school to our middle school to our high school. And we're, we're looking at the math tutoring at the high school a little more closely. We'd like to have a little more participation there. But we've just got to figure out how to get the horses to, to the pond to drink. So we're looking and exploring some different possibilities there.
Who's doing the tutoring, right?
Math teachers.
Oh.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Have you ever thought of using your students? I mean, when my son was in there, they used him for tutoring all the time because he was good in math.
No, but we'll, I'll write it down.
I mean, that increases-
No, I understand.
-your tutors that are available.
Right. The, the teachers are willing, it's just sometimes we don't have a lot of participation from our students that need to be part of that. I think we have a couple of things that were, we've talked about that will enhance that a little bit.
Thank you for sharing all this with us.
It is, and I know I flew through it.
That's fine.
But I did want you to know some of those, you know, we have a lot of them. Pretty good things going on that are, are to assist our students and import and improve their academic outcomes. That way you just, yes, ma'am. But I'm going to open the floor now to anybody that has any ideas or suggestions on anything we could add. I know it, we've spoken a little bit about applying for grants through the innovation committee. Anybody have any comments?
Well, we talked a little bit about, you know, doing the in-house innovation grants and kind of, it would be good to get feedback from, from you guys on that, you know? And kind of the general concept was, you know, maybe up to $2,500 for, you know? And it would have to be something that would be consistent with the school. And they could, you know, do an application, you know, just kind of a description of the, what they were wanting to, to do through this program. And then the board would provide, you know, maybe set aside like $50,000 to start off with. And then you could get up to $2,500 and I'm just throwing out numbers here. But does something like that, you know, work? I mean, what, what's your, your idea on that, you know? If I'm crazy, tell me that too. So.
Well, I think, and it sounds like just a mini grant application where you're looking for ideas in, I'd say, school level.
Right. And we'd fund it out of, out of fund balance, you know, so, yeah.
I think, I think that you will get some innovative ideas if they have that opportunity. Because I don't guess we've ever done, I mean, since I've been here, we've not offered any kind of mini grants and stuff. So whenever I was first getting into coordinated school health, I know that was something that coordinated school health, they, they did that a lot around through the districts in the state of Tennessee. And they seem to be very successful. You just, you get to hear more ideas and people thinking out of the box, especially if you put a little money towards it. I think, I mean, I think that it, it would work and you'd get some good ideas and maybe some good things going on.
You know, Mr. Ballard, when I think of our after school program or our excellence program, and when we have tutoring going on, and hopefully that will expand to all our schools. And there may be more needs in one elementary school than the other. So that they may have, there may be more tutoring going on in, in one school than the other. And that's okay. But when I think about our excellence program, I mean, I've got my, my group of however many kids that are staying with me every afternoon. I would apply for a grant and try to do STEM activities, things that are going to impact our students and their learning. I know it sounds, maybe sound a little silly, but a garden, you know?
Like they do at Hickerson?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, very good.
At a previous school, we used after school and we grew a garden and our families were allowed to come pick from that garden. And our students were so proud, first time gardeners, you know? And that's something they can do the rest of their lives. So.
Well, I'd like to take it just a minute and talk about, I, I met, when we mentioned the possibility of this committee in one of our school board meetings, we had one of the teachers that came in and wrote us a letter. We all got it. And so I went and met with her. And I would love to see some of our teachers on this committee.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd love to see, personally, I'd like to have a representative from each of the schools as a part of this committee. Where they have a person within the school that they can go to and they can help, someone who can help them fill out the forms for what, you know, what we're looking for, someone that they can go to and kind of hash some of these ideas off. Just a representative from each school. I know this one teacher I met with, she was so excited about the program. And she wanted to be a part of the committee. And so I'd like to see it stretch out just beyond here and get more involvement from the teachers.
Do I have to do all the Robert Trolls on making a motion for that?
You know, I, I think that, well, committee makeup generally has to be, you know, approved at the board. Well, we're going to have to make some revisions anyway because we're talking about rolling in the after school program to this.
Right. That could be part of that November committee.
Everybody's in agreement, then we could put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. And does, does having that many people make it unwieldy? That's, that's the question.
I think you'd have, I would hope that it would be a very strategic group of people. I mean, to make it work.
Right.
Because I think you're right, Mr. Ballard, if we get too many people on it, it makes it, it'll make it hard to make a decision. I feel like if we have a bunch of grants that we have and we need to vote on and pick certain numbers, the more people you have, especially teachers. I was a teacher, you know, we're very headstrong about personal things that we, you know, are passionate about. So I think that if it was intentional with who was on the committee, I don't think that that would be a bad idea.
You know, the other thing is maybe it's, maybe we have two from elementary, a middle school representative and a high school representative.
I agree with that.
But that, that keeps it a little more, but those two elementary folks are responsible for all our elementary schools and passing that information along.
So they'd have to reach out to all the schools.
Very much so.
Something like that workable, yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea to have a representative from each elementary. But like you mentioned, that's, like the group's large. Wish it could, but I think at least two from-
16, 17 people on a committee.
Yeah, that's. Well, maybe we have, elementary has a member from each school, but only two of them come to each meeting. And then the next two, and it just kind of rotates through. So everybody has representation. They do every week, but.
Or you have the elementary subcommittee or something.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So is this something that you'd want to do, like you open up a grant application once a year? Or is this something like you want to do quarterly? What are your thoughts?
I, you know, I kind of threw the idea out there. I, I wasn't sure what, how would work best in, in our system. But, but if you're starting a program, it's kind of, you know, even a pilot program in a particular classroom, you know, it seems to me it would make sense to have it, you know, start quarterly or, or something like that. So you can get enough data, you could fund it, get enough data to see if it works, to see if it, you wanted it to roll out elsewhere. Or if it didn't quite work, then you say, well, we didn't spend much money and we, we tried and, you know, on to something else, you know? So we can, yeah, I mean, there's, there's no shame in that is just saying, hey, we tried something and it just didn't work out. But, you know, you probably wouldn't be, want to be starting things, I wouldn't think, kind of in the middle of, of a cycle, you know? So, I mean, that's.
So like one grant cycle a year? Is that what?
I'd almost like to see two.
Yeah, two a year maybe.
Semester wise.
Yeah. Because they're going to be, you've got summer off and that's when you've got time to actually think about possibilities. So I'd like to see us open up one then and then one after halfway through if they want. I mean, they're constantly going to be thinking of ideas and I hate to not have it where they, where they can go.
Right.
You know, and it's going to take, it's going to take probably a good six months of working on a specific thing or four months to see if it's even working or not. And so, yeah, I'd like to see it at least twice.
So I think we'd have to, I mean, we're going to need to create some kind of application process. And then I think also like a rubric, we need to kind of decide on a rubric to look at it so that we can all be kind of clear about what we're looking for. Because I would think that things need to probably be tied to our curriculum and our standards and not be something that's totally off the wall.
Right.
As far as if it's instructional. And so I think that those are some things that we would need to do probably before we roll this out is we need to probably, you know, think about what the application process will look like and what our rubric is for deciding on a, on a, you know, a grant to choose.
I mean, outside of the professional development, and, and that's reflective in your scores as well. Excuse me. The majority of our tutoring has, is a, has a measurable aspect to it. You know, we, we know from their data because our tutors are working with those students that are invited. They're classroom teachers, they know where their gaps are, their, it's almost like the child, the children that participate in this tutoring, they don't have one teacher. They have another teacher in the afternoon and an educational assistant that supports them in their ELA journey. Hopefully this will expand to math as well. So.
I just don't want to see it get so-
Rigid.
Rigid that the really, like, you know, me, I'm an art teacher.
Yeah.
So you can't always take what they learn in art and put it into how it's going to show up on their ACTs and things like that. But there's valuable stuff going on. So I don't want to be so rigid that they have to be able to always prove it with test scores.
I understand.
I, I want, I want them to be able to get in there and some of these ideas, some of them are going to fail.
Right.
Hey, that's okay. We, we want them to be able to try something with the possibility of failure. Otherwise you don't really stretch into innovative ideas.
Fail forward.
We kind of had this conversation yesterday about, because we were trying to brainstorm what would be some ideas. And we talked about field trips and, you know, you can't necessarily tie that back to a test score. But are field trips important for kids? Absolutely.
Block changing.
You know, like our pre-K students, like since it's a state funded program, we can't ask parents to pay for field trips. And so that kind of limits the pre-K teachers on what they, but I mean, I could see pre-K teachers applying for a grant saying, no, can I take my kids to the science center in Murfreesboro? And that being something that those kids have never had the opportunity to do. And so there's not going to be tests at them necessarily, but I could see that being what you guys maybe are looking for, for innovation. Like just opportunities for students.
And please hear me say this, I know I talk a lot about the tutoring and I'm, I'm proud of what they've done. No, I, I understand. But I'm going to tell you this, in, in the tutoring and that third grade proficiency, all of those things, ACT, all those things are important.
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
But I'm going to guarantee what I remember, and I can remember that far back, Mr. Ballard. I remember-
Really?
Those field trips and those other moments at school, the opportunities that I did have to fail forward that were not tied to the California Achievement Test or whatever it was we were taking at the time. That had such a huge impact on me, but I'm, I'm all in on that.
Along those same lines, I was just out at Hickerson yesterday doing a science class for Michelle Mulligan. And she told me, she said, I had a kid who was in that class, he transferred in from Tullahoma, I think. And he was out working in the greenhouse, working with flowers. And did, did she tell you this?
No, she didn't.
Oh, he said, you know, I know I'm not a girl, but I really like this work. It was just really funny because, you know, he's kind of like, you know, I really, so you're giving him a different experience that he might not, you know? And that's kind of thinking outside.
And maybe we even create, I'm just sitting here thinking of ideas and like maybe we even create it to where it's, you apply for different types of grants. Like you have like the instructional umbrella, you have the extracurricular umbrella, you have the field trips and events and you have different things like that, that may be. And you're going to, you're going to look at the impact differently between those things. You know, you're going to look at student impact instructionally different than you would for extracurricular activities, the impact on that.
Yeah.
That might be an idea.
Well, it's good that Beth provides us this balance because I'm, I'm like a science guy, so it's kind of like, give me the numbers.
And I'm a kindergarten teacher, so this is a good group because, yeah, my heart is with the-
But there are a ton of science things that we could do that are just absolutely mind boggling. And they, the learning and they get in where they enjoy learning and they crave it. And that's what we want to create.
Yeah, exactly. We want to create excitement about learning. And I can see where we can take them to, oh, an aquarium or something like that on a field trip. And out of that, we get kids who say, oh, I'd like to be a biologist someday or a zoologist or whoever deals with fishy things, you know?
And you create those opportunities. The previous school, the, the two most impactful days of those children's first couple of years of school were the Chattanooga Aquarium and then in the zoo in Nashville.
Because I think we take some of those opportunities for granted, you know, with our own families. And that's not something that all of our kids get to experience.
And talking about field trips, if I may, Ms. Chairman, it's, it's important on those field trips. I know I talked with Ms. Ackland, she's, I know she either has or is taking a group of students to visit Brushy Mountain State Prison. Now, I'm going to suggest that every school board member in our county and wherever attend, go to Brushy Mountain, they're just kidding. Go to Brushy Mountain State Prison and visit that. Because I, I lived there in Morgan County for eight years, close to the prison. And some of the, whatever there, but that's critically important for those students that may want to go into criminal justice, whatever. But if you have the opportunity to walk through that old prison and see and visit the cell where James Earl Ray-
Right.
And I got to go in that cell room. And it's, it's another world, but what an impact that will make on those students. They'll never forget that.
It brings the history book, makes it relevant.
Makes it relevant.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So you lived in Oakdale?
No, in Wharton.
Okay. Okay. You drop a marble out of your pocket, you won't see it for a while because it's going to roll to the bottom of the hill there, isn't it?
That is true in Oakdale. I love that county.
How would we get an application together? What would we want to have on that?
That's easy. We'd have that done in a minute. Tony's volunteer for that. I'm going to run- Tanya's volunteer for that. I'm, I'm going to write Tanya's name.
No, Tanya can handle that.
I guess they volunteered to do this.
I'd love to have on that application where it talks about what they see the benefit as being now, but also what they see this potential benefit is in the future for these kids. Where do you see this adventure doing, maybe taking them someday?
So intent or, and rationale?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, that maybe that stretches the thinking to say, um, I mean, it can even direct what they choose to do when they get into high school.
Sure.
You know, whether they want to go into the, um, which type of program they want to go into. And so I can see the earlier we can get a lot of these innovative things going in their lives, the more it's going to open up their future too, so.
Well, getting away from the tutoring.
I love the tutoring.
No, I, I, I'm just kidding. So get, getting, but getting away from that, I mean, I can see teachers, uh, this is a six week process. This is a four week camp. This is a nine week camp. And depending on the length and the intent of the grant, you know, we're going to meet for this amount of days. Uh, it doesn't have to be a hundred and eighty days.
Right.
Doesn't have to be one hundred days like the tutoring is. It just, you know, we could, we could have a two week camp.
I mean, it could even be things like after school clubs.
That's.
You know, that, that sort of stuff really stretches kids.
So what would be a good number for, you know, a maximum amount on, on the grant and then kind of a, like a total? I would, you know, I originally threw out like twenty-five hundred dollars, then a fifty thousand dollar pool to be repaid, but, you know.
I like that twenty-five hundred. You, you can't do much with less than twenty-five hundred dollars. You know, so I wouldn't go any less than twenty-five hundred.
So that would probably be a good number.
That's appropriate place to start.
Yeah, and then throw in fifty K, kind of reserve that, you know, we'll talk to April about that. And then, you know, then that is designated for that and then we, we restrict that, I guess, for that. And then, um, I mean, if we need to, we can go back, you know, if we get all kinds of ideas, which, which would be fun actually to see that.
And that, I think that it, I think you kind of were alluding to this. The less string, like strings you put on this, the more ideas you're going to get.
Exactly.
And if you make it real tight and it has to follow all of these things and you have to report back all of this data, like that's what's going to turn off a lot of.
It can as well be a federal grant. Who wants to do that?
Yeah, that's going to take away the artistic people.
No, she doesn't. She has.
She has to, yeah. I know.
But yeah, I think that it needs to have some kind of, um, what's the impact on students?
Yeah.
What's the impact on learning, but maybe not tied maybe directly to test scores or, because that is going to, like especially people who aren't classroom teachers, like if you're talking about an art teacher or a music teacher, I mean, they're going to struggle with, um, even though it does tie back indirectly, um, they're going to have a hard time saying this is how I'm going to measure their success at the end.
Right.
Yeah.
We don't want to say, oh, it's got to be a smart goal.
Yeah, we don't, please don't make that.
All the grants don't have to be twenty-five hundred. If I could get whatever I'm wanting done and five hundred dollars with that grant.
We're talking about a max, yeah.
Yes, sir, a STEM, something to do with, or just something, geology.
Yeah.
Or if they can prove to us that what they're doing is, might go a little over the twenty-five hundred, but they can prove why that, that needs to happen.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't even like sticking to a certain amount. I know we have to do a little bit of that. But, you know, I like flexibility there too.
We could do a range.
Yeah. For, for April purposes, we probably have to.
Okay, well, that, that brings up another topic. Is the financial end of it. We would have.
Do we keep the money? Does it go to the school?
Uh, who keeps up with receipts of purchases?
That is a good question.
School secretaries are not going to want any of that.
Let me work on that.
Yeah, that's going to be an April question. I would say she's maybe the easiest one to figure out. If it'd be better for us to keep it locally up here.
Or within the school.
Yeah, one, the one committee meeting, April doesn't come to.
Hey, we, we pull a Joan, we just assign her to every.
That's what they do to me.
She's always on the list.
They're like, who's on that committee? They're like, yeah, they're like, Joan will do that committee.
Yes. And show you for not showing up to a Monday meeting and get three more additional duties.
You know, I like Charlie and I, uh, and I think he brought it up in the Monday meeting. Um, if, you know, we don't have, it doesn't have to be academic focused, uh, it can be field trip opportunities. We were talking about like mentoring and stuff, like dads on buses and stuff. And I think something, because just the impact that that alone does. I mean, I think something like that, people can be thinking about stuff like that as well. Um, I know it's free to do stuff like that, but you still, like background checks and.
Provide training.
Training and stuff, that costs money, so.
And that, that, and thanks for bringing that up.
No, it was Charlie.
Thank y'all for bringing, thank you, okay, we're going to fight over who gets the credit. Thank both of you all for bringing it up.
Thank you, Charlie.
I got you. But that, that was brought up. Somebody on our board brought up dads in school at one point, I understand.
I love that.
No, and, and we're talking about, and you know something, on our, on our bus.
I got sat down by Chad Partner on that one, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But we can revisit.
I think we need to revisit that, seriously.
And not all our buses, obviously, um, you know, a little more mature kids and whatnot don't need that. But on some of our buses, that, having that bus assistant on there, that would be, that, that, that would be something that I, I thought was a great idea and implement and.
I know that I tried to get them when my, my children were riding the bus to let me ride it with it as a parent on the bus. And they said we can't do it because of increased insurance costs.
Insurance. Well, that'd be something we need to look at.
Yeah, but I think it's worth looking at.
Yes, it is. Absolutely.
I mean, there's so, just so much impact. It's not just having someone else on the bus and the door. It's, it's every, someone talking to kids. Especially if we're talking about dads, some, I mean, we have a lot of fatherless children.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so just them having a male presence, I think would be, I think that's something we should look at.
And they have to tell dad jokes.
Yeah. We'll get them from Eric Key. He's got a bomb school.
That's really important.
Yeah.
So recapping, unless anybody has anything else, we're looking at a tentative, I'll say that for Miss Beth, a tentative cap of around two hundred and fifty.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, or yes, twenty-five hundred. Uh, we're looking at a committee member from each school, but as far as meeting attendance, two rotating elementary, a middle and a high school. Uh, we're looking at creating a grant application. I'm looking direction towards the blue and green mic. In creating that, we're looking at a rubric for the application. We're looking at intent and rationale for the application.
Yep.
Okay?
Long-term benefits.
Long-term benefits, that's ties in with that.
That's what I said, was like benefits now and then what are the future benefits of doing that, like you're saying. Now, right now, they're going to get this experience, but then they may in the future want to.
And the intent is growing that student's passion for X that kind of ties in with that.
Or just offering them opportunities they've never had in life.
That's their intent of that is offering, there you go.
Just expand.
Uh, we're looking at grant cycles that run, um, semester, one in the fall, one in the spring. Uh, what else are we talking about? What I missed?
Well, so here's my thinking right now. So if we're thinking, like, can we get money come January? I mean, is that possible? Because.
We can put it on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Because I'm thinking like if we went ahead and we thought that that could happen, the middle of November, we get that application out there.
Yeah.
And be ready to rock and roll. Everybody knows who's getting it in January when we come back for that second semester.
If we vote on, on setting that money aside and, and the amount in November, then that should make the money available, you know, come the beginning of the year so you can start taking applications.
Because I'm already thinking like our elementary is willing to do a fine arts night. And so I think that would be a perfect opportunity for them to, the Chrissy Led singer, the music teacher at East Coffee is willing to lead that. And so I think that'd be a good opportunity for her to apply for this and just get money that they'll need for, you know, getting the kids bust to where they're going to, you know, perform that afternoon and things like that, I mean. And that's what's something she's wanting to do in the spring, so that might be an opportunity.
You were at that, you were at that initial meeting, Ms. Beth.
Yeah, so are they thinking now of splitting it up into elementary one?
No, ma'am, it will be the entire school system at the middle school.
Okay, awesome.
Yes.
So whenever you get all these applications turned in, you know, you have fifty applications turned in, you got to think about, okay, who's reviewing those? Um, and then, because like y'all said, if we have all elementary, high school, if we have a person from each school, that's a lot of people review, that's a lot, so.
Now, you almost need a committee for reviewing.
You'd probably have to have some scoring system and then we just kind of accumulate the scores, you know, the rubrics like.
For sure.
So, and that would be kind of how you decide, I guess.
Yeah, but you'd want to decide that.
Yeah.
Hey, you know something? It's not going to be as good in January to May as it's going to be in August to December. I mean, I just see this growing and improving.
Yeah, you got to start somewhere.
Yes, sir.
Figure it out.
I do feel good about, I mean, that's a, I know it's just October, but that's a pretty quick turnaround. But hey, the girls, no sweat, I believe in them. We do have a lot of great people doing great things and, and I do believe.
They've filled out so many grants, they know how to pick.
We know how to do an easy one.
Always trust my money.
There's actually an innovative school grant that our, one of our local folks has that will apply for. And another one that a gray beard man shared with me, it's on E plan. Not what new Mr. Ballard, it was that, that one back there.
Well, I know Michelle Mulligan is going to apply for that.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, specify which gray beard you're talking about. There's a lot of them around.
Yeah.
Now, as far as who in each school, do we want to take volunteers? Do we want to have the principal pick out? Who that representative would be? How do we want to go about that? Because I've got one young lady who really wants to do it from North Coffee, so I think, you know.
I think maybe just maybe Mr. Hargrove could reach out to the principals and say, do you have, ask around your school and see if someone's interested and maybe we don't have someone from every school that's interested and we just take the ones that, take one, at least one from each school if they're, if they're interested in serving on that committee.
Yeah.
Maybe start there.
And we can do that, that, I mean, that's an email.
Well, this is the, the young lady who is very interested in it, so we need to talk to, uh, Dr. Clark.
Okay.
I'm excited.
I am too. I'm, I'm more excited about this committee than I have been about the other.
It's because, it's because me and Tanya are on it.
Now she's just come on another day. Yes, I was thinking, yeah.
I do, that's my second favorite committee. And my least favorite one is, uh, the finance committee.
Oh, yeah, we can understand that.
And are we going to limit this to teachers or can it just be open to anybody within the district? Like I'm thinking, like if Mr. Westmoreland had a, you know, an idea for sped, would he, would that be an opportunity? Or, or do you just want it to be? Yeah, because I think we need to probably need to be clear because like we have like academic coaches, would they be able to, you know, do a grant if they were? Or do we just want it to be?
I think anybody in our system would be.
Keep it open right now and then we can always.
I mean, we can either decide it's a good idea or not a good idea.
Wes Moreland certainly needs to have some interest in that.
I, I think.
Yeah, so I mean, I've just, maybe open to everybody in the district and then we just kind of see what we get.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we can, you know, and if we want to limit it to teachers down the road, you know, we can, you know, we may have to backstep that, you know, it just depends. You know, but.
But all of it to improve student outcomes.
Student outcomes, yeah, is, I mean, that's the goal.
So we couldn't get a soda machine, a free soda machine for the teachers and.
It would be kind of a stretch. You'd really have to, you'd really have to work that application.
Energy drinks, I mean.
Sufficient number of caffeine in my body will improve my performance and.
See, I mean, we can.
You already figured it out.
I will be a better teacher. I'll fall asleep at lunchtime.
So does anybody else have anything to add? I appreciate everybody sharing and just getting it off the ground.
I had a, you know, I know Gary had something about the history stuff, but I had somebody that approached me Friday night at, at our Beach Grove Chili Cook Off and, and I promised him I would bring it up here and.
Yes, sir.
I'll just throw it out. I thought it was an interesting idea and, but he said, you know, out there at the base, they have, um, a great shooting range out there. And he was proposing a shooting club. He said, hey, they got the range, they could provide the ammunition. He could find a bunch of vets that would do it, you know, so we'd have to kind of figure that out. But, you know, maybe along the line of our clay busters group. So, um, I'm not sure how that would come. You'd probably have to be a club, so, so, uh.
I'll investigate them.
I told him I would. But, but apparently the, the range is, if, if you make provisions, and they got, they got like a thousand yard range out there.
The ten, I would encourage you all to attend, despite of that.
Well, that could be something.
I'd like to use that range, but.
Eighth grade student in nineteen forty-eight and I took, I mean, uh, nineteen seventy-eight and I took.
Forty-eight?
Well, just making sure y'all are paying attention. And I, I took hunter safety with a, with a gentleman and I'll never forget that class.
Yeah.
It taught me how to, just good hunting rules and firearm safety.
And our ROTC program could take advantage of it.
Yeah, exactly. So, so there's a lot of opportunities there and, and he brought it up. I hadn't really thought about it, but, but he was just, you know, probably a member of our community, so, so it's something that, that, you know, he could help facilitate.
Yeah, I think that's great.
I told him I would definitely bring it up because I hadn't even thought about it, so.
And that's another thought I had. What about occasionally holding a meeting where we invite our community leaders to come in and add some innovative ideas to it?
Sure.
Just like that. I think we'd get some, some really good ideas from the businesses locally. And they might even be able to say, hey, I've got this at my business that I could bring a group of kids coming through or, you know, um. I'd love to see just maybe occasionally, I, I don't know how to involve them. I just think it would be a good idea.
Mrs. Skipper would probably be the place to start there because he's got a lot of connections with the local businesses, so he could probably go.
Yeah, that would be good. You have.
But, you know, once we get the bird off the ground next semester.
Yeah.
Moving forward, those are great ideas.
Yeah, you had something, Gary, too.
I like the thinking of this committee. I'm so glad that this has surfaced and, uh, this could help change, improve and change education around the county. Thinking outside the box is critically important. But I talked with Melissa on this the other day and we get this post from Melissa or ever, whatever, on the Tennessee History for Kids.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know that we're utilizing that in our system at all, but I would hope that, I don't know how that works. I would hope that our school board members could visit that, that web, webinar, whatever on that and make it available for our children, for our kids. I'm a history whatever nut, I guess, but looking at some of these topics, stuff here we've never heard in history and seen whatever, the one tomorrow, Thursday, is Tennessee's Bloody Path to Statehood. But when you read some of the material in this, it's like, wow, I wish I'd heard that when I was a kid or knew that or whatever. And one of those segments is, uh, roads and bridges in Tennessee. When I read it, I thought, that's not. But when you read some of the information that's revealed in that, like, wow, didn't know some of that. And also some of what happened with Tennessee in World War One and some of the Alvin York and whatever. Some of this is just so fascinating to me, but I can't believe, some of our kids would eat that up. I do believe that. So I just want to toss that out. I don't have any idea how to begin to research that or make that available or check into it. But they will send, they will tend, they will send, uh, history books out to the students. And it's just amazing what some of the stuff they have. I could read and read and read on that.
Please share that.
Is that a website?
I would.
Yeah, I feel like that we've used some of those materials. I think we may currently be using them in fifth grade in the district. Um, because that sounds familiar, but I don't want to, uh, say something that's in. Um, because that sounds familiar, but I don't want to say something that's incorrect. But I know in the past we've used some of those resources from Tennessee History for Kids. I'm not sure exactly what all is being used currently.
I appreciate you warming my heart as a former history teacher, Mr. Cordell. And just to let you know, we are, and we being the state of Tennessee are kind of reshuffling our history standards throughout our school, so.
But some of this is just, wow. I know. But I hope you could check and see if there's a way a backdoor approach to that work.
I think Gary and I both visited their booth at the TSBA convention a number of years ago and, and I, I'm a real history buff too, so I, I really wallow in that stuff, so. I had one other thing that you're done, you know, you know, we talked about innovation stuff and I'm just, you know, where we get ideas from, you know, and I'm kind of, I don't care if it's North Dakota or Washington or, you know, New Mexico, but something that went on and, and I don't have a lot of information and you and I have talked about what's happened in, in Mississippi. They call it the Mississippi Miracle down there where they were at the very bottom in education and now they're in the top 10.
In math and reading.
Yeah, so what, what have they done down there?
Oh, that's amazing.
Maybe, field trip.
I know the way.
Y'all need to apply for a grant.
Yeah.
We happen to know.
But it.
We're in Mississippi.
Stuff like that I think is worth looking into to see what, what do they do.
Definitely.
It's amazing, amazing where they have transitioned from where they were at the bottom of the pile and over, it's a miracle.
Yeah, yeah, it's really something. So is there anything there that we can, we can use here? Maybe it's unique in Mississippi. I don't know.
I think it can be used here.
One of the things they did, they did, there were the, what little, and this will take about five seconds, I know about it, Cher. They mandated, um, that all schools use a certain foundational phonics reading program. Every single public school in Mississippi did that. There was required training.
I think they did the letters training.
The letters training, which we're, we're using as, as well, but I think there was, and I know there's more to it, but I'll try to find some things out.
Thank you.
I think we need to send you literally on a field trip. A few days.
He does do Mississippi.
Well, I am down.
All the time. Well, it's slowing down. My youngest graduated from Mississippi State, so, but I'm, I'm sure I'll be back in state before you know it.
Detective.
I could drive him down there, mate, be his bodyguard.
And that was all I had.
Okay. Anybody else for the good of the cause?
Yeah, so what date would y'all like for the application to go out with the information? Um, and what date do we want them back so we can?
What, what would you need to roll out? Let's kind of say, you know, January, well, beginning of January when school starts back. So if we took that date and said that, you know, we want to roll things out there, so backing into, and this is kind of how, how I usually think is, I say, okay, what do I need it by? And then we back into deadlines from there. So what would you need from there?
So are you saying if we wanted to announce maybe the, the grant recipients at the January board meeting? Which is January, is that, does that be the goal?
Yeah, that would be good.
So then we need to back it up and say, give enough time to get it sent out and then return it and then have time to select. So that may be a quick turnaround.
And we'll get the money on the, on the November board meeting agenda, so. I don't know if we need to actually approve the grant application. I think we just need, probably need, the board just needs to approve the money.
The money appropriated for it and then we can get to the other.
Yeah.
Later.
Yeah, I think that.
I'd say these two, Mr. Hargrove could approve the application. I don't know a thing about what an application would look like. Needs to look like or whatever.
2,500, I think the board would probably have to approve it.
Yeah, only the grant.
Well, that's the grant, but the applications themselves and the plans.
Okay.
Do we have to do it within, I mean, can we leave it open for, say, a three-week period? That during this three weeks you can send them in, then as they come in, it would be easier to look at what's coming in a little at a time than to suddenly look at everything all at once.
I think we could open it up.
I think the first time, let's make it a month window because that, that third quarter that never ends if you're in the teaching position. Let, let's give everybody a month. It gives everybody to get back into school and it gives everybody a little bit longer. And maybe we chop it down, like you say, to three weeks in the fall. We've done this before.
Yeah, I just want to give enough of a window that people.
Yes, get things together.
So we were thinking, have application and everything sent out to them November 7th?
But then I'm wondering, do we have to wait to send the application out until it's approved at the board meeting for the funding? Would we, would we need to do so that's ambitious?
Well, we could send it out, but they take a risk that the, the board somehow.
Not doing.
I'm pretty sure the board would approve the funding, but.
When's the board meeting? The 11th, November 10th?
Hold on, Ms. Melissa.
Send it out that.
Send it out November 10th.
We could send it out that afternoon, that night after the board meeting if it's approved. Would that be okay with everyone?
And we'll give everybody till December the 8th.
And we'll make sure we send that out for everybody to look at that application and put some eyes on it and give us some feedback.
I'll try to have our team, which I will include all of you all on the email. I'll try to have our school representatives in the next week or two. Does that sound good?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Also you.
Anything else? Ms. Jonah, what's for supper?
I grilled hamburgers, I think. I hope my, I hope my husband is cooking.
I promise you I get that plug here and I got it in for you.
Is he watching on YouTube?
I do appreciate everybody's input. This is real good conversation. It's healthy and it is, it is very exciting. And, and, and the fun part. And it's good that, I feel very blessed to be part of the team. So speaking of Robert's rules.
I don't know if we need to do a formal vote on a genuine.
Thank y'all.